Wow.
Did you sleep this morning?
Got his own job back.
With the field.
Mountain Colorado ski resort. Just for the rest of the season, until he gets down to business. He's having a good time. He works at 12,500 feet. He's having a good go. Yeah, he's a good day. Helmet. Steaming. He just got finished skiing. That steam is coming off. So cold. Got to be buddies with a bunch of people from Brazil. He said, "I'm gonna have cars," and he's got a car. And I said, "Can you take us to the..." He said, "I think this is gonna be a beautiful place." He said, "They're incredible." I mean, can't be.
Evening, evening.
You've got a lot of exposure.
Improving every day.
Yeah, acquiring.
I need to. Two weeks at least.
You too.
You change it to Trump of God, everybody start looking up. Not really. We haven't been listening. We've just been talking about frivolity.
Huh? Quiet?
Well, he got cranked up yet.
We go, give us a few minutes.
Hopefully, hopefully, as rain will.
Anything you want to tell me?
There's no doubt about that.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, it's seven o'clock. I wish to recognize that Board Chair Patty Cooper Jones is with us this evening via remote telephone access as required by the Board of Supervisors Electronic Meeting Policy in Section 2.2-3708.2 of the Code of Virginia. Board Chair Patty Cooper Jones provided notification that she would have to be physically absent from tonight's meeting due to illness. She has requested remote participation in tonight's board meeting from her home in Farmville. Her request is in conformance with the board's electronic meeting policy and the requirements of the Code of Virginia. Pending an objection from a member of the board, Board Chair Patty Cooper Jones's participation from a remote location shall be approved and be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Are there any objections to the chair participating remotely?
No.
None heard. Madam Chair, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
That's great. We have a following to thank and praise you just for the opportunity to be here for your minute blessings and the day that you've given us. I would just thank you for the ability to be here. We ask that you be with each and every one of us, that we make wise decisions, not only for ourselves but for the county, the surrounding area. We ask now that you be with Patty, as she is ill. We ask that you give her complete healing because we know that you're the author and finisher of all things. We ask now that you be with us like I've asked. Go with us, keep us, that we come again, and we'll thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, if you could hold just a second, we're having a little trouble getting the volume up.
I guess she's gotta count to ten or something so we can hear her. Ask her to count or something. I don't know. It's not working unless you speak.
Patty, can you count to ten to see if we can hear you a little bit?
One.
A little better.
Five.
That's good. I think if you talk loud like that, I think that's a little bit better. Okay? That's not a speaker, so it's not. She's.
She's coming through of the system.
The system, not through. No. Let me, I'll tell you what, that might be worth an effort.
Just let her call in.
Patty, can I call your phone and then you pick up for a second?
Hello?
That sounds a little bit louder. Do I hear a little better?
Again, Patty.
Hello?
Yep, let's try that.
Okay.
Get your volume turned up a little bit.
All right, madam.
Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
None, madam chair.
And I have none. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll call on Krista Baker for recognitions.
Cheryl's gonna handle it, madam chair.
Thank you.
Recognitions is an opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to recognize achievements in our community with a focus on the accomplishments of students, employees, and our citizen volunteers who serve the county since ever. The Board would like to recognize our January 2024 Employees of the Month, the Prince Edward Social Services Smile Committee, a director's advisory group which has been active in building morale within the agency while looking to address diversity, equity, and inclusion amongst the employees. The group comprised of workers within each of the agency's units, must plan multiple events and coordinated efforts to hear each and every employee's voice, recognize their differences, celebrate successes, and learn and grow through the difficult times. The members of the committee wholeheartedly brought into the thorough process of engagement with their peers in a positive manner that ultimately translates to positive engagement with the clients and community. This special group is committed to making a difference whether it be within the walls of our building or within the Prince Edward community. Congratulations to, right now, we only have two other members, Chelsea Kalmman and Shirley Taylor.
Shirley. Thank you very much. Well, it's all flat back here. All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The Board would also like to recognize Edna Lee, our February 2024 Employee of the Month. Edna has overcome extensive challenges that alter her life. In spite of it all, she continues to display all of the county's core values. Edna is a team player with innovative solutions, strength, determination, attitude, and resilience are inspiring. Congratulations.
Somebody will make Chelsea all that way. Hey, big bug.
Congratulations, everyone. And at this time, we will move on to public participation.
Madam Chair, we have two names. The first name on the list is Mr. Howard Armstead.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm Howard Armstead. I reside at 706A Hill Street in Farmville. And I would first like to wish a happy birthday to our chair in abstentia here, Patty Cooper Jones. I'm sorry I missed you on your birthday, but that was a few days ago. I hope you get well very soon, Patty.
Thank you, sir.
As you, as most people here know, February is Black History Month. And in honor of Black History Month, I've written something, not just for you here in Farmville, but also for the Virginia State Legislature. When I was at the opening of the legislature in January, I understood that there were five bills concerning sickle cell anemia. And this included bills about forming a registry of everybody in Virginia with sickle cell anemia, et cetera. So I wondered why so many bills on sickle cell anemia? And it turns out that one of the members of the House of Delegates has a son or daughter that has sickle cell anemia. And a number of the members of the state legislature carry the gene. It's a recessive gene, so you have to have two of the recessive genes together to have be born with sickle cell anemia, which is a very debilitating disease. You have crises, very high painful crises several times a year. And it, on average, takes about 20 years off your life. So I didn't know much about sickle cell anemia, but I knew a bit about anemia because when I was, as an AIDS researcher and Ebola COVID-19 researcher, I knew that years ago, when they did a study in Africa, that some of these AIDS drugs, that when you added selenium to the AIDS drugs, it tripled the increase in the protection against anemia. So I knew selenium worked very well against anemia, but I had my doubts about whether it would help with sickle cell anemia because that was kind of a different thing, different type of fish, so to speak. So I did my research, and this is the result. You know, we have 4,000 people in Virginia with sickle cell anemia. Now, I was talking to different people, and one of my neighbors had a brother many years ago who died of sickle cell anemia. And when I went to my dentist appointment, the receptionist said, "Her cousin recently died last year of sickle cell anemia." A young man that was 22 years old in Detroit. So recently, there's been a lot of news that they've discovered a cure for sickle cell anemia. But how much does a cure cost? Well, you have a choice. There's two different, two different companies that came up with a cure. One costs $2 million. The other one costs $3 million. So you can have a choice. I don't know who's gonna pay $2 million for one person to be cured of sickle cell anemia, or $3,000, $3 million to be cured, but you can get cured if somebody pays for it. Now, according to my research, everybody, all 4,000 people in Virginia and 100,000 people in America could benefit and reduce the burden, reduce the problem with their disease if they added selenium. And I've distributed this to several members here. Four copies to your Board of Supervisors. I'm gonna take a copy to Dr. Almond, who's the Virginia representative here. So, you know, I learned at my grandmother's feet here in Farmville, Virginia, that health was as important as wealth. Because it doesn't matter how much money you may have, if you're not healthy, you can't really enjoy it. So I do research in Farmville to, on these projects, and I'm, I'm sharing this with the members of the Virginia General Assembly to see if we can't have some action to find improved treatment for sickle cell anemia. Meanwhile, my two books that I've written about viruses and the pandemics are available at the Uptown Coffee Shop. And I appreciate your attention, and I hope you all have a healthy year, this whole year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Madam Chair, the next name on the list is Ms. Chloe Hodges.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Chloe. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and happy belated birthday to the chairman. I hope that you're feeling better, and I'll be praying for you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here today on behalf of Energy Right. Energy Right is a nonprofit that's helping localities navigate the clean energy landscape in the state of Virginia, primarily working on the local level. So that's who I'm here with today. Our mission is to advocate or educate primarily on clean energy issues from a conservative perspective. We want to make sure that solar projects and other energy projects are good neighbors. We want to promote clean energy done the right way. We focus on all of the above energy strategy, and we really help on the local level to make sure that good projects are passed. I just wanted to come here today and introduce myself to you all. I'm happy to be here, and I'd love to be a resource for all of you if you ever have questions about clean energy in the county. And I'd also like to get to know each of you better and to learn more about the locality so I can be as helpful as I can be. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Chloe.
That's all the names we have on the list.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who would care to speak?
None.
Erin.
Madam Chair.
Erin Nunn. We will move on to Board of Supervisors comments. Mr. Emmert?
Yes, ma'am. I'll start out and just say thank you all for being here tonight, each and everyone that's here. Congratulations to those that received awards tonight. We appreciate your, your work for the county. Reason why we're here, I guess, more or less, and to the citizens that are here, it's our job to try to do these things correctly. So please be here, and if you think something is wrong, please let us know so that we can either correct it or educate you on while we did so. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I just want to echo David's comments. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for carving time out of your schedules to come and be involved, citizens, and to help hold us accountable to our mission of serving you. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you for being here, and certainly good to have recognized some of my fellow members of the Lee District, Ms. Edna Lee and my daughter, Chelsea. It's always good to have you, and thank you for being recognized Employee of the Month, and continue the great work. We need you. And thank everyone else for being here and to be a part of the local governance.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I want to wish everybody an early, happy Valentine's Day. If you know me, you know I have an exceptional Valentine. I wish and hope that all of you have a partner as good as I have, and thanks so much for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Pride.
Good evening, Ms. Patty, and good evening, everyone that's in attendance. It's good to see all of you here. I would admire you to encourage you to stay safe, stay safe. Even if you don't have a child in school, you know of children, encourage them to come to school every day because attendance is very, very important. And congratulations on our honorees tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Everybody pretty much summed it all up. Just glad to see y'all here. Let's get busy with the work.
Thank you, sir. And I too, I appreciate the board, the staff, and the participants in the audience allowing me to participate remotely. And I wish you all well health and take care of yourself and be safe. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Nunn, are you in the house?
Who'd you say, Patty?
Is Donna in the house, or we just doing that in the consent agenda?
Consent.
Okay. I'm flipping through the pages. I don't have my little extra sheet. I apologize.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we, that we would approve the consent agenda as presented to us, unless there's something from the board that they would like to pull out.
Second half.
Okay. We have a motion. Can we have a second?
Done. Second half.
It has, motion has been made and properly seconded. All in favor signify by saying, well, we'll do the roll call. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
And Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you kindly.
You missed one. Madam Chair, Mr. Gillum.
Oh, Mr. Gillum, please forgive me, sir. I apologize. Mr. Gillum?
Good. Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. And what is the next thing? I can't see it.
Presentation, FY '23 audit?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we will have the presentation of the audit.
And Mr. Rolder from Robinson Farmer &amp; Cox Associates will be doing the presentation.
Thank you so very much.
Good seeing you, Josh.
Good to see you all as well. Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, here tonight to present the fiscal year '23 audit report. So I don't know if we're gonna be able to get this up on the screen here or not, but...
Actually, I'll get it for you.
Okay.
Well, I'm expecting you to have...
I can start with the first part of it that just kind of talks about, there we go. So first of all, there's kind of two deliverables at the end of the audit process. There's the communication of those charged with governance letter, as well as the audit report itself. Going through the actual, you know, letter itself, I'll kind of hit on a couple of points there, and then going forward into the audit where it kind of is broken out between the... Which goes forward. Okay. Okay. So first, starting with the, the communication of those charged with governance letter. Again, this is standard communication. It's kind of the same as last year, prior years. There's a couple of things in there. The first talks about the different responsibilities of management, the different responsibilities of the auditor. First, then, management is in charge of, you know, developing internal controls, maintaining internal controls, as well as taking responsibility of the financial statements themselves. On the auditor's side, we have the responsibility of testing those controls as kind of our total, you know, risk assessment process where we look at the whole county, look at a lot of different areas, and kind of develop our audit plan off of that. The second part of the letter, this year, there were no new accounting standards that had to be adopted by the county. So kind of a lot easier to compare prior years to this year because there were no, no new accounting standards that had to be adopted in the financials. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit and disagreements with management. We had neither of those. All of our requests were fulfilled, all of our questions were answered. All of our, you know, accounting questions, all the things, how we were gonna deal with stuff, how we were gonna report stuff, none of, there were no disagreements there. So all, all clean on that end. Corrected, uncorrected misstatements is another part of that letter. We had no material journal entries as part of the audit process, so a very kind of a clean audit opinion, as well as, you know, not many adjustments at all. There were a couple, I think maybe one or two, that were very immaterial, very small dollar amount that, so. From there, the actual audit report itself, this audit report is broken into three basic sections, the financial section, which is our auditor's report, as well as the financials, the footnotes, et cetera. And then the statistical section, which breaks out 10 years' worth of information for various different items of the county. And then lastly, is the compliance section, where this is our auditor's report on internal controls, and then our report on the federal compliance piece. So the first part of the audit report is our auditor's opinion. This is where we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion for you all for this year, kind of the best opinion that you can get, so all clean on that side. And then before we get into the actual financials, I'll kind of go through the actual audit process. So as part of our audit, we cover, obviously, the county, county finance, county administration. But we also, you know, deal a lot with the treasurer's office, the commissioner of revenue, as well as the school board, social services. So we kind of hit all the different areas of the county in our testing and our, our audit procedures. So our audit procedures are made... So, our audit procedures are made up of, you know, testing those internal controls. Just a few to kind of name them are AP disbursements. We do a random test. We do some more targeting testing, targeted testing where we're testing certain accounts more, certain dollar amounts more. We're also looking at payroll disbursements as well as credit card transactions, as well as the cash receipt side of things as well. Tallying up all of our control testing and compliance testing, the number of transactions that were tested during this year's audit process was 378. And that's just on the expenditure side. So, that's the number of transactions we looked at. On top of that, we do quite a bit of the larger account balances, you know, the bank reconciliations, the property tax delinquent listing. We're testing those kind of balances since they're so material to the financial statements. Into the actual financials now, Exhibit 3 is your governmental fund balance sheet. On that page, the total ending fund balance for governmental funds was 28 million. Of that total 28 million, the general fund fund balance was 19 million. And of that 19 million, 82,228, 18 and 1/2 million of that was unassigned fund balance there. Two pages forward, Exhibit 5. This is, again, related to the governmental funds of the county. This shows your revenues, expenses, change in fund balance for the year. The total of all the governmental funds, the fund balance increased by $1 million. Of that increase, the general fund increased by 887,000. So, there are a couple graphs that are all kind of, hard to explain the graph verbally. But, you know, most of these graphs are, they're five years' worth of information in the general fund for expenditures and revenues. Both of them show kind of steady along, like steady growth there. You can kind of see that information as well in that statistical section in the report. But, you know, as you can, or not as you can see, but general fund revenues, just for example, five years ago in fiscal 19 were 27 million. This year in '23, they were up to 32 million. So, kind of, and it's been a steady growth through those five years.
Josh, they've got the slides working. I didn't know if you were trying to follow the slides.
There we go. Okay. Now, I gotta find my place here. So, this graph here that we're at, this is kind of just showing the relationship between general fund expenditures, which is that line compared to the total fund balance for the year. So, as you can see, it kind of is still matching. It's pretty consistent along those five years. And then this is the five-year trends for the top there, the, related to that graph that we just saw, the fund balances percentage of expenditures. You can see it stays pretty consistent right around 70% there. And statistical section, this is where I reference where it has 10 years' worth of information in the report. A couple of things that I pulled out and kind of just, five years' worth of information. The next one, the next slide is, again, just the general fund, but broken out between the different revenue categories. That top line is your total property taxes. You can see it steadily increases. The bottom line there that has that blip in '21 is federal revenues. That's when that, you know, the large chunk of the COVID funding came in. So, that's where that kind of outlier is coming from. Onto the next page. Again, similar blip there in '21 related to the COVID funding there. That big triangle is related to the initial, the CARES Act stuff that came through that was all under general government there. The next page, this is your real property assessments versus total outstanding debt. You can see there, at the end of '23, this percentage is around 0.7%. And I told this to the Audit Committee meeting, in the Audit Committee meeting as well. There are certain guidelines that this should stay under 10%. So, if you're going off of those guidelines, then under 1% is obviously a pretty strong percentage for that. And the last page on this presentation has to do with the compliance section. Our auditor's report on internal controls, this is where we did test these controls as part of our testing and we found no issues that needed to be disclosed as material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So, we don't give an opinion on the internal control structure of the county, but we have issued a clean report for that. So, no matters that need to be disclosed there at all. There was one issue of state noncompliance. This is related to the annual school report that was not filed by the September 30th deadline. It has since been filed and we talked about this in the Audit Committee meeting as well. It's, there's no monetary penalty. There's no real repercussions from that either, but it has been filed at this point. The last letter in the audit report that we, from us, is the Report on Uniform Guidance, which governs the federal compliance piece of the audit. And in that, again, we don't give an opinion on all compliance of the county, but from what we tested, there was no matters that needed to be disclosed in that. So, a clean, a clean report there on the federal compliance piece as well. And that's the end of my presentation. Happy to field any questions you all have.
Madam Chair, this is Doug Stanley. I made this comment at the Audit Committee meeting. I had put Josh on the, you know, kind of on the spot, but I think we've made significant strides each of the last, I'll say, two years to address some internal, how to say, whether it's been journal entries or corrections that we've had to make. I think we're getting, the staff is getting better, both on our side and the school's side. I say our side, the Treasurer's Office and Finance Department. The books are getting cleaner. The things that we have to clean up at the end in the audit are getting fewer. Would you agree to that, Josh?
I would definitely agree with that. And just a couple of years ago, I believe we did have either a significant deficiency or material weakness because we had so many adjusting journal entries that us as the auditor had to make on our end. And like I said at the beginning there, I believe we have maybe two journal entries this year. And both of those were extremely significant, meaning if we didn't make them, then, you know, the financial statements are still materially correct. So, going from a couple of years ago where we had, you know, a good amount of journal entries, material and immaterial, to this year having just one or two very immaterial entries is very significant strides. I would agree with that.
Mr. Stanley, I would agree. As I was at the pre-audit meeting that we had, so I appreciate Mr. Robinson, Palmer &amp; Cox. Josh, I really appreciate the work that y'all have done. And I think that we can say that we were very pleased with our audit report this year. Are there any questions from the board members?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. I was just going to reference Page 21. Second year in a row that, you know, economic factors influencing fiscal year 2023 budgets and tax rates. On Page 31, on Page 21, you know, it shows just how important Longwood and Hampton-Sidney are to our county and how negatively we've been impacted, you know, by their shrinking enrollment. And, you know, just, we need to do whatever we can to support those two institutions so they can perform. In 2018, Longwood had 5,080 students, now 4,467. That's an appreciable, you know, a pretty big decline. And employees full-time went from 798 to 696. It's a kind of a commensurate percentage drop. And Hampton-Sidney has gone from 1,046 back in 2018, students to 876. And, you know, those college kids spend a lot of money in our community and they provide a lot of jobs. And when they're shrinking, it's a hurdle to clear for us, you know. So, just reminder that whatever we can do as a community to help them be more successful, really will pay dividends.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? We get a motion to accept the report?
Move it, move it. Move it to Board of Supervisors. Approve and accept the fiscal year 2022, 2023 audit asked presented.
Thank you. Could we get a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you so very much.
Good job, Josh.
Thank you all for having me.
Okay. Next on our agenda is Community Partners Update.
Actually, Madam Chair, Mr. Kellner, due to a family health issue, is unable to be here. So, we would move on to Number 11, Highway Matters.
Thank you so very much.
And Mr. Bill King is here this evening representing the local residency.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Chairman and board members.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Stanley, like I said, I am Bill King. I'm acting in RA right now for former residency while Scott is doing some training that he is in Lynchburg. He'll be there for 90 days, so you got me. So, I try to do the best I can. I'm a fish out of water on this. Right now in the county, we're, some of y'all may have seen, we've been trying to do some brush cutting on 460. May have noticed that we have been doing gravel roads maintenance with maintenance replacement stone. We've been putting down a lot of stone after this winter. We're hoping this winter's over with so we can catch up with that. We're doing some pothole repairs. I just got to notice Route 701, we've done a double barrel replacement on it and the contractors will be wrapping up tomorrow. The road is done. We just got to wrap up a few issues down there. 665, Worsham Bridge is on schedule. They had a little slow start. They had some trees that didn't realize they needed to take out, so they had to get some special permission to take those out, but they're back on track. And they've got their ACE team down there working on the bridge, white construction. So, they said they should be on schedule, if not above. If the weather holds out, we'll keep on rolling. Just found out, Tech 2, Route 360 is back open from the emergency lane closure this afternoon for them to replace the two poles of Dominion Power and Green Bay. So, we're back open. Everything is in good shape. Moving on, Scott had sent me this, just the afternoon, we found out some deals to rural rustic. Rural rustic, we'd like to get the board, if you could, to do a road designation as rural rustics to all of the routes that you have designated to be a rural rustic in your six-year plan. By doing this, helps us to get these things opened up for charges and get work started on them a lot sooner. And you got that, Mr. Stanley?
Madam Chair, that's on Page 183 of the packet. It was in the table pack. So, I guess if we can, while Mr. King's here, if we could consider that resolution.
Okay. Let's proceed.
It should be in your table pack. You don't... Yeah, absolutely. Let's see here. So, let me read it, Madam Chair. Whereas Section 33.2-332 of the Code of Virginia permits the hard servicing of certain unpaved roads deemed to qualify for designation as a rural rustic road. And whereas any such road must be located in a low-density development area and have no more than 1,500 vehicles per day. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Prince Edward County, the Board desires to consider whether the sections of the following roads are delineated and attachment age should be designated as a rural rustic road to include Route 647, Rice Creek Road, Route 682, Junction Canal Road, Route 611, Quail Crossing Road, Route 647, Lowman Road, Route 625, Featherfin Road, Route 668, Bell Road, and Route 632, Schultz Mill Road. Whereas the Board is unaware of pending development that will significantly affect the existing traffic on this road. Whereas the Board believes the road should be so designated due to its qualifying characteristics. And whereas these roads are in the Board of Supervisors' six-year plan for improvements to the secondary system of state highways. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board hereby designates these roads as rural rustic roads and requests the Residency Administrator for the Virginia Department of Transportation to concur on this designation. Be it further resolved, the Board requests that these roads be hard-surfaced and to the fullest extent prudent, be improved within the existing right-of-way and ditch lines to preserve as much as possible the adjacent trees, vegetation, slide slopes, and rural rustic character along the road in their current state. Be it further resolved, that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Virginia Department of Transportation Residency Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Emmert. Can we have a motion to accept the resolution or is there any discussion?
I would say so. Move, Madam Chair. Second.
It has been moved in second. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Patty Cooper, yes. Thank you.
Now, I guess, now, as I say, Madam Chair, I don't know if anybody else has the... Bill, did you have anything else? You just want to hear any road concerns they have?
Road concerns you got?
I got some. I got two.
Okay.
Worsham Road at the intersection of Red Shop?
Yes, sir.
At the intersection, I talked to Scott. They're looking at doing some signage out here because of the intersection, like a blind, like the sight distance.
Yes, sir.
See if, while y'all out there, if anything can be done with that. That was several months ago, Bill.
I think we talked to the gentleman that owns that and he won't...
He wouldn't do it, but that's why I want to do some signage.
Okay.
Because he wouldn't give permission to grade that down and...
Yes, sir.
Increase that. But maybe we can do some signage prior to getting to the intersection where people can be alert, more cautious.
Okay.
Another thing is, I mentioned last month, Old Ridge and Zion Hill. I got another complaint this morning with all the rain. That culvert apparently is stopped up, so the water is just like a pool running across that intersection.
Yes, sir. The contractor cut right through our pipe. And we're trying to get, we're going to have to go and replace it and build them. We've been after them, trying to get them to come back and replace it. So, we're going to have to go out and do it ourselves and backbuild them, try to take them. But we know we got to get that taken care of, but I do appreciate it.
Okay, Bill. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Yes, Ms. Bill, on Harris Creek Road between 460, if you were coming out of the Dollar General there. Someone called yesterday and said that it's a culvert there or something that's washed out. It's a pretty big hole. If you would just check it out.
Okay.
Some residents that live on there said that road's really narrow anyway. When they get there, it's nowhere to go if they meet someone.
Right at the intersection?
Right between, you know, right there at the intersection between that and 460. So, I didn't go up there today, but if you would check it out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. King. Look forward to meeting. Look forward to meeting you.
Yes, ma'am. Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, how things coming along on Parkland?
Sir?
How things coming along on Parkland?
We should be able to shoot it soon spring breaks.
Okay.
Put, finish the stone up and get the rock shot on it.
Okay.
Yep. That's the biggest thing right now, is we want to make sure we got the weather. We laid the stone, let that get right, and then we're going to get the rock shot soon as the weather breaks, so we can get 65 degrees on the road.
All right. Thanks, Bill.
Thank y'all.
Bill, one comment I'll make.
Yes, sir.
The crew you got that was working on the 540 road, cutting the trees and limbs back, did an excellent job.
Yes, sir.
Keep them on the job.
Yes, sir. We're trying to, we're, like I said, we're actually stepping out to our roadside division. They've got a pretty good contractor now that's been cutting brush for us along with our guys, and we are going to try to focus more money to that. If it doesn't snow anymore, cross your fingers, we're hoping to get some snow money back where we can put the brush cut.
Okay, that's good.
Thank y'all.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. And we're moving on to the event permit.
Sarah, got to shoot it back just a minute. Yeah. You moved a little quick on your desk. Give him a back.
Madam Chair and members of the board, we have two event permits. One is in your board pack and one is in your table pack, if you have not yet had an opportunity to review it. So I will start with the one on page 91 in your board pack. This is our friends at Alpha Sigma Phi fraternity at Longwood. This is the third year that they have come before us for an event permit for their pig roast alumni social event, scheduled, tentatively scheduled for April the 20th with a rain date they've set for April 21st, based on last year's experience. And so I won't belabor all of the specific details, but we'll call your attention to the recommendation under the sample motion, as we have done in years past, which is to cap the event attendance at 900. The event will stop at 4:00 with guests vacating the premises by 5:00. In order, these are the, these are the conditions in order for them to receive their signed permit from the county administrator. So these would be the permit conditions. They provide us a copy of the contract for the Portujans and Handwashing Station that, again, as they have in years past, the fraternity members will follow through on the trash pickup of the event site and along the roads where there may be any leading out to US 460. They share the agreements with their catering. They have the on-scene standby EMS unit from Peavers. All parking is contained on private property as required by law. They provide the contract for the four security officers. The university will help ensure that the fraternity provides designated drivers. The county noise ordinance will be adhered to, and then they will provide us the notarized authorization by the applicant and the landowner providing right of entry, should it be necessary, as stipulated in the county ordinance. I will say that, again, this year, the county, or last year, the county received no complaints from noise from neighbors about trash, nothing. So we have nothing adverse to report to the board regarding this event and it being held. Supervisor Emmert, I know this is in your district.
It is. I would say to the university, they've done an outstanding job. They're cleaning up the problems they had to begin with. Thank you for doing so. We expect the same if it's passed.
And there are two representatives here, so if you have any specific questions, Trey and Ryan are here and would be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. As usual, we provide a copy of the permits once they're obtained and all of the information about the event to the sheriff's office and other local law enforcement agencies, because our, I'm going to say, our constant concern would be driving under the influence, alcohol violations.
I'm a move that we approve the permit application.
I'll say.
It has been moved and properly seconded to approve the event permit. And Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you so very much.
Keep up the good work, Bill. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, if you so please, I will move on to item number 22, which is on page 187 in your table pack, which is a new event permit this year. This is submitted by two fraternities, SAE and Sigma Chi, at Hampden-Sidney College. So this is our first time working with the fraternities at Hampden-Sidney, and we're happy to have Cody Carnes with us this evening in the audience. So it's a similar, I'm going to say, type of event, outdoor musical event. They have requested attendance to be approved for up to 800, and in following with all of the requirements in our ordinance, so we're recommending attendance be kept at 800. Their event is in the evening. It's a Wednesday evening from 6:30 to 11:30. So the event will cease at 11:30 PM, and the premises vacated by guests by, we said, 12 o'clock midnight. In order to receive the signed permit from the county administrator, we'd need a contract to show payment for the Portujans Handwashing Station. We would also require, and as Cody will learn, it's what happens this year determines what happens next year. So the sponsoring fraternities will ensure that the fraternity members follow through on trash pickup. So this is on Monakin Road, right off of Abilene Road. And so we would ask that the trash be picked up on the property, but also any that should happen to escape out onto Abilene Road. We would need a copy of the agreement for the catering services. They are hiring, let's see, a Grateful Fed food truck will be there. They also, we need the agreement, they're going to use the Hampden-Sidney first responder as their EMS. So we just need concurrence from the Hampden-Sidney Fire Chief, that he's going to have the first responder staffed and on standby from 6:30 to 11:30 the night of the event. All event parking would have to be contained on the private property, none out on Abilene Road. We would ask that the college help ensure, and Cody said there is an organization on campus at Hampden-Sidney that provides designated drivers. I don't remember the name.
HSC.
Okay. So there is an organization at the college that can help provide, and I think you said also that fraternity, other, the fraternities will provide their own designated drivers.
Yeah, we'll all have separate drivers for the night that will show people back and forth between campus and the satellite house, which is going to happen.
So let's see, moving on, the county noise ordinance will be adhered to. So last year, it just so happened, and the sheriff is here, in 2023, this event was in fact shut down due to multiple noise complaints. And so Cody and I have talked about that, and they have already got plans to change the direction of the speakers. He readily admits that maybe they didn't use the, have the best strategy last year, and so they're going to face, if you, if you're standing at the entrance to Monakin Lane and you're looking back, there's a huge expanse of open land, I guess that would be kind of to the southwest, that there are no houses, but there, if you see the map that I provided in the table pack, there are a number of residential structures, and I even drew the distance. So they're going to face the speakers of the band so that they face into this expanse of unresidential, you know, uninhabited property. Now, that's not to say that they're still not going to have to monitor the decibel level of how loud the music is, because those two noise complaints that come in is what triggers the sheriff's deputy to show up.
Okay.
And turn the music off. So Cody and I have talked about that. They are well aware, you know, and so, you know, that's, the board's permit to hold the event doesn't negate the requirements of the noise ordinance. So your permit says you followed the event permit ordinance, but your stipulation is you have to follow every other county ordinance also. So the noise ordinance is still in effect. So their geography is a little trickier than our, than for the one that's out in the prospect. That's, there's huge space out where the Longwood event is. So it's a little trickier. So this will be an opportunity for SAE and Sigma Chi to maybe fine-tune their plans and be aware, and I think, Cody, you had indicated that y'all are also going to go door-to-door in the neighborhood and make people aware of what your plans are, which I think goes a long way of generating goodwill with the neighbors.
And Sarah, my question.
Yes, ma'am.
When should that start? Because I got many calls about the noise level.
Last year.
Yes.
Yes, I think the sheriff can agree with you.
So when will they start going out?
Well, the event is not scheduled until April, so my guess would be they probably wait a week to 10 days in advance and probably start, you know, going out to about a week to 10 days in advance of the event to let people know, you know, what's going to happen. And ironically, as I recall, and sheriff, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that night when I got the call from your deputy, the irony was it was not the close-in neighbors that called.
Right.
It was people that were a half and three-quarters mile away, and in fact, if, based on what Cody told me the direction that the speakers were, one of them was out near Worsham Grocery. But if the wind was blowing the correct way and the music was playing that way and it, you know, drifted in the wind, I could see where it could go. And I think the other house, as I recall, maybe had young children, and certainly by April, people can have their windows open, and so, so yes.
I have another question, just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
Greek Week. Why is it on a Wednesday night? Does, is that the night of Greek Week?
It's the beginning.
That's the beginning of it?
Yeah, I think, so the celebration is Greek Week.
Wednesday or something.
Yeah. And so I think we would all relish to relive our college years and know that events could start on Wednesday nights, and we would be able to sustain through the weekend. So.
Sarah, one quick question on the other one that we were requiring them to have security. Are we requiring security?
It's not, it's actually not required, you know, in our ordinance. That's the, yeah, it's, they have to have.
Encouraged, but not required.
Right. They, they, I mean, there has to be, you know, traffic control.
Tony, any comments?
Let's see, let me just see if we've covered all of the conditions for, so then, again, we have to, the last item is we have to have the notarized authorization by the applicant and the landowner. Should the sheriff's office need the right of entry, they would have the right of entry. That's why we require that, if it's a permitted event that gives the sheriff's department right of entry, to determine, you know, if they need to enter the property. So, so with that, I believe the application is submitted, as is the, as is the map that shows the surrounding neighborhood. And Cody is here and is happy to answer any questions. Point of trivia, Cody, I'm going to call you out. Cody's mother is a member of the Board of Supervisors in?
Middlesex County.
Middlesex County. So just, we happened to find that out as we met Cody, so I thought y'all would find that interesting.
Can I ask who the landowner is?
Sterling Investments is what comes up on the.
Ian Brock, isn't it?
County.
Ian Brock.
Ian Brock is, so it's not Sterling?
No.
Okay.
They on park, they still on the around there.
Okay.
For where the housing are.
Okay, sorry, I.
The housing is going to be all the way at the end of the lane?
So Cody, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is going to be on the 122 parcel?
Correct. And last year, we had it directly across that road facing out towards Abilene Road, which is what followed that noise down the road and caused all those complaints. So this year, we were going to put it closer to the road facing the opposite direction towards that 182 and 266 and that one back there.
Which are vacant, correct?
Yes. And they're owned by the same Ian Brock. They're vacant.
So again, you know, the underage possession by consumption and driving under the influence are obviously two of the county's greatest concerns, especially with the history of Abilene Road. So we will, again, provide this information to the sheriff's office and the sheriff's partnering law enforcement agencies to try and dissuade anybody from entering a right way under the influence. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions the board may have. I will say that.
Here are no questions. What is the pleasure of the board?
So we give the Blues Brothers just one more chance. Sorry. Nobody but the administrator left. I move that we approve the project, give these guys a chance to redeem themselves. After last year, it looks like they've got their house in order, and it should be successful this time.
I'd second that.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Uh, yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just a quick word caution to Hampton City. This is your time to redeem. Make sure you do. Thank you.
And I would like to add that to David's comments as well.
Thank you.
I would recommend keep the volume turned down. Officer doesn't need any more phone calls.
I think it's animal control.
Mr. Adam Luma? Madam Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I'll kind of do the cliff notes of all these fun amendments for you. If you have any questions, as I kind of cover them, just shout it out, and I'll try to answer it best I can. So these will be proposed amendments to the county code chapter. So these will be proposed amendments to the county code chapter 10, which is just entitled Animals. So I reviewed all of these with the county attorney and assistant county administrator and myself. We made corrections and pulled some additions from the code of Virginia. So I'm gonna just go ahead and start on page 106. Like I said, I'm just gonna give you the cliff notes. Any questions, just give me a shout. So county code 1030, we are amending that to allow the county administrator to appoint an animal control officer on behalf of the board. That kinda cuts out some wait time if we need it. Also, that covers the duties of animal control officer as previously stated in there. Moving down to the bottom of the page, we've added some unlawful acts, which were class four misdemeanors. It's gonna be codes 1041. I'll just run down this little list. Falsifying license application, failure to pay license tax, allowing a dog to run at large. That one, we will be revisiting in 10-70 a little bit later. Violations of rabies regulations, failure to dispose of a companion animal, failure to secure a license, failure to confine a diseased cat or dog, removing a collar or tag, concealing a dog or cat that is at risk of rabies exposure. And then the 10th one on that one is to permit a cat or dog that is at risk of rabies exposure to stray from your property. Some class one misdemeanors that we're adding on there, animal abandonment, making a false claim, and removing electric collar or tags from animals. Unlawful acts that will be punishable through civil penalties, allowing a dog to run at large in a pack, which would be two or more animals at a time. And we've got these stipulations on offenses. First time would be $25, second time $50, third time $100, and any time after that would be $100 penalty as well. Jumping to section 1042, this is completely new to the county code. We have had issues within the last year or so. Folks will find a critter because they're on their way to work and they'll take it all the way to Richmond and never actually report it to the local animal control. So if someone reaches out to us trying to find their dog, we have no report of it. We can't really help them out. So this way, it makes folks report it to us within 48 hours. Also makes the finder responsible, if there is a collar or tag, that they have to try to reach out to the owner best they can. And then it gives a fine of $50 per animal. Generally, it's only one critter that they find at a time. But hopefully that this will help people remember to call in, even if they live in another county. They don't have to turn it over to us, they just have to report it. And then moving to section 1050.
Adam, just a quick on that. If someone saw some, picks up a dog, they're supposed to let you all know? Is that correct?
Correct.
If it has a collar?
Correct. And all they have to do is call us and report it. They don't have to come turn it in or anything like that. They can hold it for the stray period if necessary.
All right, I'll revisit that in a minute. Go ahead.
Okay, so 1050 just clarifies the requirements of individuals to get a dog license. 1051 is just updates on how to obtain a county license. 1052 and 1053 errors were corrected from when the county ordinance was published previously. 1061 is the rabies clinic authorization. We've changed the wording of this. Authorizes the chief animal control officer to hold a rabies clinic if he finds that the number of rabies clinics within the county does not meet the citizens' needs. We've had a lot of questions as of last, probably about last year of when we're having a rabies clinic. There are several places within Prince Edward County that hold rabies clinics at least once a year. Bridge Animal Hospital does every weekend in January. There's also some ones at Tractor Supply, several other vets outside of the county as well. But we'll try to squeak one in every once in a while when we, when we can. And then the biggest, I feel the most important thing I'm kinda asking y'all to take a look at is the county ordinance 1070, which is running at large. We've had some issues with some court cases where the wording kinda made it so the case got thrown out. The ordinance previously stated that we had to give a notice to an individual for the dog that was caught running at large. So if you had, your neighbor had five dogs running loose, I'd have to give them a warning for each individual dog, not just like a blanket statement, hey, your dogs are running loose, here's one warning. You'd have to give them for each individual one. We're asking to take away the notice, the notice portion completely. This has been on the books since 2009. It's safe to say that folks should probably know better by now, but we'll also be doing some more education. Some of you may have seen the nice flashy billboard thing we put by the water tower at Lowe's that we've definitely got some calls about, but it did awaken some people to the county code. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read this one little part so everybody in the audience knows what I'm talking about, too. So it shall be, we're asking for it, "It shall be unlawful for any person to permit any dog belonging to him or under his control to run at large in the county at any time. A dog shall be deemed running at large while roaming, or running, or self-hunting off the property of the owner or its custodian, and not under the owner or custodian's immediate control. An owner or custodian whose dog runs at large shall be liable upon conviction to a civil penalty as set forth in 1041." You'll notice that it says owner or custodian. We run into issues as well. Let's say I own the dogs, but I go to work and my girlfriend's there and she lets all the dogs run out the house. She's the custodian, so she can be liable for whatever the dogs get into as well. So that's why it makes that very clear that it could be owner or basically the babysitter, whoever's supposed to be taking care of them while you're gone. The other portion in this that we're adding, it should be unlawful for any dog to run at large in a pack at any time within the county. As I kinda mentioned before, we have had issues where folks let, you know, their dog run loose, but then their neighbor's dog joins in the fun, and then you just have three or four dogs all running amok in the neighborhood. And we just kinda wanted to make a little bit more stiffer penalty for it, just to kinda help us out a little bit. Any questions on that one? I know that's a big one, I kinda threw at you there.
I don't, I don't hunt with dogs. How does this impact that whole?
So this, yeah, this, this will not actually impact the hunting, using hunting dogs, because as you can see, it says self-hunting in the, in the one portion.
You used to phrase self-hunting, because if you're, if you're sitting at home watching football on Saturday afternoon during hunting season, and your dogs are three properties away hunting, your dogs are in fact self-hunting, because you're not with them. So your dogs aren't hunting, your dogs are running at large, and you're sitting at home watching football. So we use the term self-hunting to delineate. Now, if you're out and your dog happens to be three properties away and you're lawfully hunting, then that is covered by the state hunting regulations, not presented with animal control. That's how we delineate, because where is the owner of, where is the owner of the animals?
And pertaining to that question as well, the section that is not being removed from the county code is the part that states that shall not, people shall not be held liable for this section if lawful hunting with dogs or dogs, law enforcement or search and rescue activities supervised, formal obedience training class or show, formally sanctioned field trials, or bona fide hunting or field trialing dogs. So it still covers all the bases, so people can still go hunting and they just have to be actively hunting with their critters.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna draw the board into the statewide debate of dog hunting and state protection.
Adam, my guess, go back to 1042 if you would.
Yes, sir.
And the problem I have is, a little bit of a problem I have is that they can wait 48 hours to notify you all. Two problems here. I had someone pick up my dog literally laying beside my fence on my property and took it off to, one went to Amelia and one went to the informatics, and then I got a phone call that my dog, that they had picked my dog up. And I asked where they picked it up, and they said it was beside the road. And I said, where was it beside the road? And they said beside a blackboard fence at such and such a number on Oliver Road. I said, the dog was at home. It's my property. So I have a problem with you all making it 48 hours. If anybody picks a dog up, they should, if there's a collar or anything else on a dog, they should call immediately. Most everyone has a cell phone now, and I'm not saying everyone has to. But I would say reduce that to 30 minutes. I realize you won't do that, but I mean, for someone, for someone to pick a dog, and also the wearing of a collar. I have a dog that's 17 years old that never leaves my property, that hasn't had a collar on in 17 years, but it can travel exactly three-quarters of a mile from where I live to where my mother lives and still be on my property. And people have picked that dog up and it's not very fair to me to have someone pick my dog up on my property and then the county calls me wherever else and says Tiny is at our, at the pound. So I, that's something that we need to work on also, because that's happening more, more times than one to other people also.
Right. So the, just to address the timeframe, this comes straight from the state code.
But we can, we can decrease it, correct?
Can't increase it.
We can't increase it, we can decrease it. Is that correct?
We can make it more stringent.
I would defer to the county attorney on that one.
We could make it loose, but not more.
Stringent.
In fact, we should make more stringent.
And I'm not sure, David, that it, that I will bow to the law degree of the county attorney also, but I'm not sure that that says that the dog necessarily has to have a collar on. It says any individual who finds a companion animal, doesn't, it doesn't say in a that that animal has to have a collar on in order for, for it to notify, so it doesn't-
But there's no way they can notify an owner or anyone else?
No, they have to notify animal control. The notification goes to animal control.
I think this says make a reasonable attempt to notify the owner.
Well, and that's if there's a collar. But if, but either way, they're supposed to notify the public animal shelter that serves the locality where the companion animal was found. So if somebody comes along Oliver Road and sees your dog and decides that it wants to take it for a ride, they have 48 hours to notify Prince Edward County Animal Control. They may not know it's your dog, but they have to let Adam know so that that way, if you call Adam and say, this, I'm missing my dog, and he looks like this, Adam should be able to say, well, Mr. Emmert, we received a call 30 minutes ago that a dog was picked up on Oliver Road and is now in Amelia. And so-
All right, therein comes my second question. Whose responsibility is to bring my dog back?
That one, I mean-
That's a good question.
It's a very good question. Let's just say in that instance, you call us and say our dog, my dog was picked up and taken to Amelia. Generally, it would be on the owner to go pick it up regardless of how it got there, but there are extenuating circumstances, I'm sure, that can be resolved, I believe, you know? And that's, so your, your situation, like you're saying someone picks your dog up off your property, you know, they think it's loose on the road. That's actually why this ordinance would be very crucial, because they have to report it to us.
Or what?
That they, or they get a $50 fine per animal.
But if they don't report it, no one knows to begin with.
Well, I mean, that's, that's why we want this ordinance, though. So, so we at least have something on paper that says if you do this, you're gonna get in trouble for it.
If they steal your dog-
I understand, I understand theory, I understand theory, but theory and practicality is so far removed that we're, we're creating-
This is a mechanism to give us enforcement authority? If we don't have this, we, we have no ability. Does that make sense? So is it perfect? Probably not, but it's a mechanism.
Well, it's, I don't even see where it's a mechanism, because if they don't report it, it doesn't matter anyway. You don't have, there's no enforcement here is what I'm getting at.
You don't know where the dog is.
Correct, there's no enforcement.
Right, but, but oftentimes prevention, I mean, if people know there's a law and a penalty, I can remember some years ago, one of our former animal control officers got a call from a young lady who was headed home from school and who took a dog from this county to the state of Kentucky. And he told her she had within 48 hours to return that dog, because he'd already gotten a call from the property, I mean, from the animal owner, saying, and she'd taken it home with her. She was on her way home from school. And she'd taken the dog all the way to Kentucky and said, we'd bring the dog back. So it's not gonna solve every circumstance, but it's, you know, it's gonna solve some circumstance.
I can see two sides of this thing, really. If you've got an animal that's creating damage, property damage, somebody else, gotta have some way to rule it. But I'm like David, I wanna take my beagle out, which stays with it all the time, listen to it run a rabbit in the afternoon, and might go to the neighbor's property while it's coming back. And my neighbor's dog, they come to my house every now and then. You know, everybody's kinda gotta use a little, little judgment wheel, know whose neighbor's dog is who, and if the animal is creating a problem, then we call you for sure.
Adam's huge staff ought to be able to take care of all of it.
Hey, I'm, I got three now, I got a posse, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to cause you, cause you heartburn, Adam. It's, it's just, I'm not about, I'm not about causing more legal jargon either, if that's, if I can say that without causing any, any ill feelings or whatever else.
I think Mr. Gillum, I think you're not gonna call animal control because you're okay with your neighbor's dog coming over. I think it's only gonna come up when you, the dog goes onto a neighbor's property, maybe they have cats or chickens or something else, the dog, they're worried about their other pets or whatever, they're gonna call.
Is there a wording that can be added if damage is done, or like somebody's chickens get killed? We've had that issue before.
I wanna comment, I think, I don't want another person's animal on my property, because if I have my dogs and they, in compliance with the ordinance, even if I have a female versus a male, they coming up and they running at large, and next thing you know, you got a litter of puppies. If you take care of the puppies, that's like money, okay? You got vet fees. Then even if you had two males and not feed my dogs, I'm not buying food to feed somebody else's dog. So they shouldn't run at large for that reason. Okay, now, you're hunting and do hunting dogs come on my property? It's a difference, okay? You try to, most of the time, the hunter gonna go around and try to round up his, his dogs. If not, they stay around, they got a collar on them, then you gonna pick up the phone, hey, you're hunting dogs at him. That's what I'm used to. Now, most, if I pick up a stray dog, see, 48 hours is too long. Now, I can see if I pick up a dog 2:00 in the morning, I'm not gonna call David at 2:00 in the morning, wake him up and say, hey, man, I got your dog at the house.
You gonna call him, make him go look, Jerry.
I'm gonna call, I'll probably hold that dog, or most hunters will cage him to the next morning, and then call the owner and say, look, I picked your dog up this morning, if you want him to be his where he at. if you want him to be his where he at. But, you know, me personally, I don't watch stray animals on my property, whether they damaged or not, because I have animals and I take care of my animals and I expect someone else to do theirs. Now, I have a problem with that now. I don't call Mr. Muma on several occasions, took pictures, bam. If my dog can't run at large, I don't want theirs running at large.
I, I won't, I won't disagree with you on that, you're, I, I, and.
I got one question. How many dogs do you have in front of you, Karen?
Say that one more time.
How many dogs?
That one, I'm not even going remotely trying to put a figure on.
I'd like to know, do people buy a tag?
We can tell you how many tags have been purchased, but we're not going to promise you that that is equal to the number of dogs that are.
Oh, yeah, yeah. How many licensed dogs you thinking you can?
Oh, gosh. It, it, so the treasurer will receive, say you go get your rabies shot at, on Ridge Animal Hospital. Ridge will send all of the rabies certificates to the treasurer's office whether you go and register your dog or not. So we still know if, that those dogs exist somewhere, but you also have to think there's the number of folks that ever take their critter to the vet.
Some of the ones that buy the tag, the legal people, wonder what the carry is.
I, I honestly, off the top of my head, I could not tell you. I just know the spreadsheet that I have. It's really long.
I'd like to throw that to one, I mean, we could.
Yeah. So one of, one of the difficulties, Supervisor Jenkins, is that I can buy a lifetime tag for my dog. The problem, the county doesn't know how long does that dog live? So we've sold, like over the last 10 years, X number of lifetime tags. We can make some assumptions.
You have to renew, so you have, your, your tag renewed.
Just like a ball of pop.
With your, um, with your rabies.
Rabies shot, yeah.
So if, if in four years you haven't gone, if you haven't taken that dog, even though you have a lifetime tag.
Well, assume that dog has passed away.
Well, or, or your license is revoked because you have not renewed the rabies certificate within the required three years. Yes, sir, we can get you a number of how many.
See how many, how many tags are sold.
We think current legal tags.
How much money that creates for a can.
I don't know if it generates a lot of money, but.
But if it's $10 a tag.
This, you, you need a motion for a public hearing, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Just for a public hearing.
I'm not going to belabor it.
Second.
It is, it is.
Any other questions concerning the dog? Do we need, uh, approval to accept a new ordinance?
It, it, you have a motion, a second advertised for a public hearing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Yes, ma'am.
It has been motion and properly seconded, we accept the new animal ordinance rules. Um, Dr. Pride?
Yes.
For public hearing.
It's just the authorization, Madam Chair.
Oh, just the authorization for the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So we're authorizing for a public hearing. Okay, again, Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you so much. All right. And Mr. Muma, is there something else that you need to handle with us?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's the, uh, request to appoint our new animal control officer. Uh, I'll give you a little spiel here and then you guys can do what you guys do. So last year, Board of Supervisors graciously approved us to have a full-time kennel assistant and officer in training. After posting the job for several weeks, I think it was about a month and a half, uh, we received eight applicants, uh, which we just went ahead and interviewed all eight since it was just that few. Uh, after careful consideration of the three-person hiring committee, uh, we selected Mr. Richard Giellombardo for the position, which I have drug along here just so you can see his face. Uh, Richard has a number of years volunteering and working at several SPCA's with, around the country. Um, he seems very motivated and we look forward to training him in. Uh, for the month of February, he will be mainly focusing on the shelter, uh, just cleaning, data entry, things like that. Uh, I'd like to get him started with his field training in March. So that's where I, Madam Chair and members of board, I ask that you appoint Mr. Giellombardo, uh, animal control officer for Prince Everett County effective March 1st.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we appoint Mr. Richard Giellombardo to the position of Deputy County Animal Control Officer for the County of Prince Everett effective March 1, 2024. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you so very much. Okay, next on our agenda, Ms. Cheryl Stimson.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
A couple of agenda items for your pleasure. The first one is the school cares appropriation. The Board of Supervisors has received a request from the Prince Everett County School Board to appropriate the cares funds described below for a total of $16,200 for the 23-24 school year. There is no local match required for the appropriation.
So moved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we, uh, approve the amendment or the appropriation to the school cares approach appropriations. Uh, Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
And Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is also another school appropriation. Um, the request is for state funds described below for a total of $405,000 for the FY23 and 24 school year, and also there's no local match for this appropriation as well.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded for the fiscal year 24 school appropriations. Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Next item is, um, dare appropriations. The sheriff has received a donation in the amount of $625 from Spring Creek Baptist Church towards the dare program. The board is asked to approve and appropriate as below.
Appropriations of the opioid abatement authority grant has been moved and properly seconded. Mr. Emmert?
That was for.
That was for dares.
That was for dare.
That was for what?
The dare program.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't see that one. Oh, I do see it now, I apologize. Okay, that is for the dare appropriation. Again, Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum? Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you.
Got Townsend.
Oh, Mr. Townsend, I apologize, Mr. Townsend.
No, you're fine.
Get off your boat, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on is the opioid abatement authority grant. On January 9th, the board approved the acceptance of $44,750 in grant funds from the opioid abatement authority. These funds have been received as of February 5th. The board is asked to approve and appropriate as follows.
So moved.
Just, just a quick question. That goes to Sheriff's Department.
You talking about the dare or you talking? So that money, um, we actually got that as a grant that we applied for. It's for Prince Everett, Cumberland, Buckingham. What we're going to do is basically just a community outreach to find out where we should be spending our opioid funds.
I thought that, I thought it was.
I know, there's been several, um, a lot, what's the total?
So this is just for the, uh, the grant to do the study, but, uh, I, we, we've collected less than a hundred thousand countywide so far and it's sitting in a, we can only spend that on opioid stuff?
I'll second that.
Okay, has been moved and properly seconded to appropriate the fiscal year 24 budget supplement as outlined above for the opioid abatement. Uh, Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Next item is the IDA Tobacco Commission Grant. On February 8th, 2022, the board approved submitting a grant proposal to the Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission for the Heartland Innovative Technology Park Water Tank. This TRRC reimbursement grant totaling $530,100 was rewarded in 2023. These expenditures would be incurred by the IDA. Therefore, we ask the board to approve and appropriate as below in order for the IDA to recoup the funds expended.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to appropriate the IDA Tobacco Commission Grant Fund. Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert? Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
The next item is, oh, sorry, did she have something else she was going to say? Okay, I thought she said something else. The next item is the county department credit cards. The staff is asking the board to consider authorizing the reissuance of two new credit cards for county department usage and to consider allowing staff to have the credit card currently issued to Ms. Puckett's name canceled and reissuing the card under county administration only. The first credit card would be issued to the community development department to pay the 2% levy for the building office each month as well as for training and travel expenses for both the building official and other staff in the community develop department. The second card would be issued to the economic development department so they may pay for a variety of venues throughout Prince Everett County as well as any other items they may need to purchase in the performance of their duties. And then finally, the staff is asking to have the card issued in Ms. Puckett's name reissued under county administration for a variety of purposes within the county administration office. All three credit cards would be maintained in the finance department and users would sign the card in and out from the finance department so we are able to track the changes, charges made on the cards for payment purposes. The treasurer will need a letter from the board authorizing her to open the new accounts and providing a limit fee each card, the suggested was $10,000, which is what we currently have except for Doug's card.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded to reissue, to cancel Ms. Puckett's card that's in her name and reissue under the, uh, names listed for the county, each department. Um, Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you.
Doug, did you want to talk about CPMT while I'm up here? Item number 24, did you want to talk about that now?
Yeah.
Um, 23 and 24 maybe?
Don't worry, it's you.
She said, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so the first item is number 23, which is the appropriation for the Commissioner of the Revenue. We are working with the new Commissioner of the Revenue to get real estate records in her office up to date. When she took office, real estate transfers were more than 14 months behind. In addition, the tax map books need to be brought up to date. Recorded Platts for the past four years need to be provided to Timmins to update the GIS and we need to confirm that all new construction has been added to the tax rolls. Former Commissioner of Revenue Beverly Booth has been working with their staff to assist with the updates and training of staff. Uh, we're asking the board to appropriate $6,000 to the part-time line in the Commissioner's budget and $500 to the FICA budget line to provide compensation for her time. This will provide funding for 20 hours per week through the end of the fiscal year. We will be including a request in the proposed FY24-25 budget for additional hours moving forward. At this time, we are estimating that it may take a year to address all outstanding issues and bring all records, files and maps up to date. The board previously approved $8,000 on March 15th to assist with the updating of real estate transfers, but the office wasn't able to complete the task at that time. So the cost is $6,500, which is 20 weeks at 20 hours per week at $15 per hour.
So moved. Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded, Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you. The last item I have is the CPMT chair appointment or CPMT team appointment. So last month, you, you were gracious enough to appoint two people to our CPMT team. Unfortunately, one of those people can no longer stay with us and we're asking to appoint another, um, CPMT private provider from UMFS. Um, she is a, um, private provider representative and she is the family systems coordinator for the South and West region of UMFS. From 2020 to 23, 2023, she was the intake coordinator for UMFS. Prior to her position there, she worked in the local DSS. Ms. Bain received her bachelor's in social work from Longwood University. She has extensive experience in intensive in-home services, therapeutic day treatment and mentoring services within the community. The appointment would be effective immediately and would expire on June 30th, 2026. If you all approve it.
I, I'll, I'll say yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Has been motioned and seconded. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Uh, is Mr. Stanley, you up next?
Ms. Puckett's going to handle that one, Madam Chair.
Okay, Properties Committee, okay, thank you, sir.
Um, the Properties Committee met last, um, week and provides the following report
The Properties Committee met last week and provides the following report to the Board. As the Board is aware, the county is currently utilizing Cell E at the landfill, which has an estimated useful life remaining of about 1.9 years. So last fall, the Board authorized the county staff to proceed with the construction of Cell F and authorized the issuance of an invitation for bid. We received bids on February the 2nd and received the five as outlined below. A recommendation for award letter is attached from our engineering firm, Lobella, who evaluated all of the bids. All of the bids contain the mandated 5% bid bond, the low bid of $1,550,518 submitted by Red Oak, however, failed to include a qualification statement, which is a mandatory form that provides information that they have landfill construction experience. So Lobella is recommending award of the contract to the second lowest bidder, Sergeant Corporation, at $1,594,000. This bid is approximately 13.8% higher than the engineer's estimate from August 2023. However, we will say that Sergeant did the construction of Cell E and did a good job for the county back in 2016. And so the county currently, as of June of 2023, has a landfill construction fund balance of $3.576 million. This fund was created by the Board and captures payments from Buckingham for disposal of trash, out-of-county trash, and the current balance will cover the cost of this project and also the purchase of a new dump truck that we're going to talk about in a moment. So we are asking the Board to award the lump sum bid as outlined in the Agenda summary.
And also a 5% contingency as well. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we awarded the bid to Sergeant Corporation. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Oh, I couldn't hear you, I apologize. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next on our agenda is...
Hey, Sarah's got one more for about the dump truck.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, I see the dump truck, I just got to it. All right, Miss Sarah.
She's still up here.
So the Properties Committee also reviewed the purchase of a dump truck for the Solid Waste Department. Currently, the, I'm going to say the Solid Waste Department is without a dump truck, an operational one. The current dump truck is a 1972 DJB 250, and repairs and maintenance parts are obsolete. So a dump truck is critical for landfill operations as Virginia DEQ requires three days of daily cover, be on the working face at all times. Jeff and his staff use the dump truck to move the soil from the on-site borrow area to the working face and also for sediment basin and sediment pond maintenance. Jeff obtained bids for both new and used dump trucks. The committee reviewed the bids with Jeff and the County Administrator. It was determined that it was more financially justified to purchase a used dump truck at this time. Note, the cost of a new truck was between $551,000 to $575,000. An evaluation of the used bids, which ranged from $198,500 to $350,000, determined that a 2018 John Deere 410E at a cost of $198,500 with 7,978 hours and under warranty until 9,000 hours or until August 23rd, 2025, was the best opportunity and economic decision for the county, and that bid is attached in the committee's recommendation to the Board is to authorize the purchase of the 2018 John Deere 410E in the amount of $198,500 for the landfill, from the landfill construction fund.
Just add to that, the committee looked at all the options and everything else, and this was the best option. I would recommend that we do so. I know it's a lot of money and whatever it is, but the money is there. Doug and I talked about that, and Jared was saying that the money is not necessarily coming from, well, it's not coming at all from the taxpayers of Prince Edward County. It's from the landfill, it's from the refuse from other counties that they have set aside. So the money is there to do so. So I would recommend that we do so. That's my motion.
This is what we call an end dump, not one that's used on a road.
Correct.
Isolates.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded that we purchased the 2018 John Deere 410E in the amount of $198,500 from the landfill construction fund. Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you. Okay, it's time for County Attorney's Report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Madam Chairman, I hope you feel better soon. I guess you heard part, part of our work was on the animal ordinance, and we've reviewed some contracts. We're working with the, with the IDA, hoping Harbor Freight's going to close by the middle of next month, maybe. And had some discussions with the Building Inspector, had some training with the Board of Zoning Appeals. I've also started on a leadership training. It's a combination between the local government attorney group, the Virginia State Bar. And I was scheduled to go to a conference in Fredericksburg next week, but due to my husband's aunt passing away, I had to cancel on that. But they're, they're having various seminars, I've already taken one on conflict of interest. You know, talking about, you caution the Board, even if you're at a social event, you start talking, two or three get together and start talking about something that you could be, be in trouble. Anyway, and they're, they're having small, one-hour seminars, but they were having this two-day seminar. But it's a two-year program, and you're basically learning about local government. And it's, it's a pilot program amongst this group. So I was excited to go, but I, I need to postpone it and go. But anyway, I hope I can, you know, bring more reports to you about the seminars as we go along. It's a good, you know, good group of local government attorneys and the Virginia State Bar local government group. So trying to work on that. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Thank you very much, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stanley?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, a few items to hit on. One, according to the Treasurer, last week, delinquent tax bills for unpaid real estate and personal property for 2023 were mailed out to property owners. As you know, the FY '23 audit was accepted by the Board this evening. Special thanks to our Finance Director, Cheryl Stimson, her staff, the Treasurer, her staff, the School Board Finance Staff, for all their efforts in getting the report completed. I am pleased to report that today, the sales tax bill, statewide sales tax bill was approved. I believe it was, received 69 positive votes, which means it exceeded the 2/3 majority necessary to potentially override any veto by the Governor's Office. So having done so both the House and Senate side, that bill should pass on through and be signed into law. Once it does, we'll be talking with our County Attorney to look at procedures to get to the Board of Supervisors to put that issue in front of the voters, hopefully this November, on a referendum to consider that 1% local sales tax. It's a, you know, a lot of work and effort, three years of effort to get to this point, and we'll see, you know, where we go from here, and hopefully the voters will support it. But ultimately, we'll make that decision.
And they passed that to give every locality?
Thank you.
Every locality, yes, sir. Our bill had been rolled into the statewide bill along with a couple of other, I call them single-shot bills, that we're looking at specific localities. Also, Senate Bill 722, which would authorize the Governor to renew enterprise zones for up to four, five-year renewal periods for zones designated on or after July 1 of 2005, and for up to two for zones designated before July 1 of 2005, giving each zone currently five more years. Under current law, ours would have ceased to exist at the end of the year. So it's important to us as our economic development tool to be able to have that incentive program in place. And I know it got out of the Senate, I think unanimously, so hopefully that's going to sail on through in the House as well. I know VDOT reported on the Worsham Road closure. Again, hopefully that'll be open, back open soon. Economic Development, Five Pillars Meets Project is under construction. Wawa Site Grading has commenced on that site and the car wash site next door. As County Attorney noted, I think we're looking about March 15 closing on that parcel from the IDA to the Harbor Freight developer. So those, those are all moving along. County staff are working on, with CRC, on a, it's called a RACE grant for project planning for the 460 East Interchange. We submitted the VDP Business Ready Sites Program grant for the Hip Park, and I know Trey is working on an assistance to firefighters' grant for our radio system, hopefully reduce the amount of cost to the county. The assistance to firefighters' grant would help purchase those radios that will go in our, our fire apparatus. I want to note, the statewide burn ban will go into effect this, I believe, Thursday, February 15th. Of course, that'll run through April 30th, and that limits any burning, can't start until 4:00 PM, and helps us prevent forest fires as the winds pick up, conditions are dry. Next week, I want to note that our Joint Finance Committee will meet at 3:30 with the School Board, and that'll be here in the Board of Supervisors in our, our conference room. And then the Board will hear that evening at 5:30 our Budget Planning Meeting, and Davenport will be here to do a presentation. And on the 22nd, we have a joint meeting with Plan Commission regarding the Conference of Plan. That's Thursday at Moton, and I'll send out a reminder again in the next week. So next Tuesday, Finance Committee here at 3:30, full board at 5:30, and Thursday at, I believe, 5:30 at Moton, if you're available. That's not mandatory, but if you are available, that'd be great. That's all I have. Madam Chairman.
Thank you so very much.
A question. You said full board on what day?
So full board, 5:30 here on Tuesday is the next budget meeting.
The 20th.
Yeah, and that's, and then Plan Commission following that, so I know you're out for that as well, Lou.
There anything else?
Madam Chair, of course, in correspondence, there were two, we had a letter from the Farm Bureau on solar facilities and Southside Community College, their newsletter. You've got your monthly reports, Amanda Control, the Building Official, CRC, Crossroads, and the Tourism Departments. And then we've got, we've got three items left on our addendum pack. The first, item 25, which is found on page 199 of your packet. It, hold on just a second. So back in December 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved Sandy River Distillery Master Agreement for local incentive grants and performance agreement for the Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development Fund, that's the Governor's Afid Fund. Mr. Mark Smith, on behalf of Sandy River, has requested to amend the terms of the incentive grant agreement. The agreement states the incentive grant reimbursement payment shall start based on tax year 2022 for real estate, machinery, tools, and personal property taxes paid to the county. The company is eligible to receive a grant estimated $6,319.54 each year in which a rebate of taxes paid by the company for that year. The current tax year that the first incentive grant payment is based on is tax year 2022, made by the company, ends five years later with 2027 payments. Mr. Smith would like to begin receiving incentive grant reimbursement payments based on tax year 2023 to the county through 2028 instead. This is a result of the setbacks caused by the 2023 accidental fire and damages they incurred at the distillery. In addition to the incentive grant, the company is eligible to receive a $5,000 tourism grant each year if the company proves it's met the metrics in the agreement on page three, section B, page two, section A1. Agreement states there needs to be $150,000 in investment in equipment, as well as three new employees hired. Equipment receipts totaling $171,490.56 were submitted to verify the company has met that metric, and two spreadsheets from 2022 and 23 were emailed from the company to verify the addition of three new employees. And then Mr. Smith has asked, was asked to prepare a notarized statement of affidavit that they had met that requirement. So at this time, we would ask that the Board approve the modification of Sandy River Master Agreement to begin the incentive grant reimbursements based on tax year 2023 and extend through 2028. So moved.
Just a quick question. I take it that... My math here has got me confused.
Okay.
2022, if 2023, if they had significant setbacks, it's going to be less than 2022?
We, we had, so we didn't pay 2022, he hasn't started it yet. So what he's asking to do is kick it a year to 2023 to begin the incentives.
But if they had catastrophic damage, they're, they're going to have less stuff to tax in 2023, it's going to be less?
That would be harming himself.
Correct.
Let's let him, I mean, he's asking for this, it seems, he seems to know what he's doing.
He didn't ask for 2024, I guess that would have been the question. Just push, it pumps it a year.
He's just asking for the whole thing to slide, the whole five-year window to slide a year, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Just wondering.
That's right.
23, this is.
The 22, Karen? Yeah.
I think it's 22.
That's what...
That may have swung you off.
Yeah. My math on, on the numbers in the year got me messed up.
I move that we extend that to him, to that company. Based on tax year 2023.
Harrison already made a motion, you second?
Second.
Yeah, we need a second, it's already been motioned.
So you have a second, Mr. Watson, second, Madam Chair.
Yes, so it's been motioned and seconded that we move his tax year thing from '22 to '23 of 20, through 2028. And that includes his tourism grant, all that good stuff. Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Madam Chair, just want to clarify, yes, it was June of 2022 was the fire.
So we need to change?
Yes.
No, we don't need to change anything. I'm just, the, the information was incorrect as far as the year on the cover sheet.
Okay.
The fire happened in '22. Next item, Madam Chair, item 26, on page 211. County staff have been working with the CRC to apply for a grant to the Tobacco Commission for matching grants to approve access to the Hip Park. Currently, the Hip Park is served by Persimmon Currently, the hip park is served by Persimmon Tree Fork Road. While the road's in the state system, it's not adequate to meet future needs of the hip park. The total estimated cost of design and construction, construction improvements is in excess of $5 million from earlier estimates. This time, we're requesting $442,500, which we are proposing to use VDOT Economic Development Access Fund grants to match for total project cost of $884,010. Again, the combination of those grants, we've used recently with the access road out the Prince Edward County Business Park, approximately 50% of those, that project was paid for with Tobacco Commission and VDOT grant funds. The estimated project cost has been provided by Timmons. This fund will allow the county to advance transportation improvements to, to the site by completing design work, utility relocation, right-of-way acquisition. Ultimately, this will allow the county to bring the hip park site to a higher level of business-ready site certification with the state. It will also make the project quote-unquote shovel-ready when we're able to attract a prospect. They'll know, you know, those, those long lead time items like moving power lines and getting the right-of-way will be out of the way and taken care of. The application has, had to be submitted by the deadline last week. What we're asking the board to do is adopt the resolution in your packet, which basically retroactively authorizes the application. Happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Been moving properly second to adopt the resolution for the hip park road access. Is that, that correct, Mr. Stanley?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Emmert?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes, with a question. Where was access coming in?
So right now, we're approving Persimmon Tree Fork Road off of West, East Third Street. So straight from the light back to the site.
Thank you. I'm sorry, my vote is yes.
Okay, Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pry?
Yes.
Matt Self?
Yes.
Next, sir.
Next, we have a closed session, Madam Chair. I don't, I don't think it's going to be more than five or 10 minutes long, but I think if it's appropriate, we'd like to go in closed session. On page 233, there's a motion.
I got you. I move the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session for the consultation with legal counsel regarding the provision of legal advice from such counsel related to an unsolicited proposal for intergovernmental contract pursuant to the exemption provided for in section 2.2-371188, the code of Virginia.
Second.
It's been motion and properly second that we go into closed session. Dr. Pry?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones, yes. We are now in closed session. Patty Cooper Jones, yes. We are now in closed session. Patty Cooper Jones, yes. We are now in closed session.
Madam? Madam?
Yeah, I got it.
Coming back?
Yeah.
Oh, I got, I got you.
You got it, Dave?
I didn't see it. I didn't see it. Madam Chair, you there?
Yes.
I move the Board of Supervisors to return to open session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
And Patty Cooper Jones, yes. We are now in open session.
Madam Chair, whereas Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors has convened in closed session on this day pursuant to the affirmative recorded action in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the Board to such which closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which this certification resolution applies and only such matters, only such public matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Miss, Madam, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, let me back one, one moment. Any, any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the clause one or state the substance of the departure of this agreement taking place. Mine, mine is still yes to the fact that it was done correctly.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Do we have anything else, or do we need a motion for, please, uh, I guess we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the county administration and legal counsel to continue negotiations with the Department of Homeland Security, ICE, regarding a service agreement to provide detention facility services within the county and prepare and advertise a request for proposals for the operation of detention facility services similar to those provided by ICE Farmville to be undertaken in connection with the ICE service agreement.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Can I get a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Lou's got you.
Lou's got you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we recess until February the 20th at 5:30 PM here for the budget work session.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.